Shall we rise for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, liberate and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. The board requests that all audience members be respectful to others by not whispering or having conversations during the meeting. This will allow everyone, including our minute taker, to hear what is being discussed by the board and other participants. Sound travels easily with the acoustics in this room, and any background noise makes it more difficult here. We have our minutes of our board of selectmen's.
Wait a minute.
Oh, you're good.
No, he told me to go.
I know I told you to call, but pay attention. Give him a minute, just a minute. We have signatures. Does he have his sign happen to me?
We have minutes of our board of selectmen's public meeting held on May 7th. The head of a motion. Have a second? On favor? Any opposition? Are there none? If you want to sign that too, while we're at it.
Sure.
That's what's flowing. Our first new business is American Legion update flags and patriotic purpose funds.
Yes, in your packet, I have provided you with an email that I received from Woody Fogg. Woody Fogg is a member of the American Legion. He reached out, letting me know that the Legion Post 58 voted to forego the usual $1,000 budget request for patriotic purposes in light of the default budget. They would like to do their part and reduce costs and support things that define our town. They would like the town to consider redirecting that stipend to Old Home Day Committee to help support the activities of Old Home Day, fireworks, police, fire detail, or whatever else we feel need.
I will let we appreciate that.
Oh, and also, you might see today in collaboration with DPW, the Legion have put up American flags on Main Street and the up church show. So we'll see them be put up throughout the week, and they're going to leave them up until the end of the summer.
I'm not going to take it down in front of a week before Old Home Day because it's a permitting process to put them on a telephone pole, so basically they can't be up. So they have to be.
Up and down?
Yeah, so we're gonna leave them up for the week of Memorial Day, and then we'll take them down in a week or two, and then we're gonna put them back up before Old Home Day.
Awesome. Also, in Woody's email, we have been talking back and forth, and they have expressed an interest in a kids' vote program in conjunction with the elections to aid citizenship and civics education. This would be something that we explore later on in the year. We would want this to be kicked off for the town election, as that is where the voter turnout is low. Woody has already included Al Nix and the supervisors of the checklist in on discussions, and I would coordinate with the schools to see if they would have interest. And I think it was Barrington had done this last year at their town meeting. And basically, as you get the school-aged kids to come in with their parents, and they go in and they vote, and they learn about the process, and they get to talk with the supervisors and the moderator and all those involved in the town election. I think Barrington even set up their own little mini-election. It's like we've done before. You know, they get to vote on, do you want this or that?
We get to hear the outcome of this vote from the kids.
Sure.
I think that's important. Because they're on a vote, we should hear the outcome.
Hopefully, it'll encourage the parents to talk about their kids, and the kids get involved in the process. But they just wanted to put the feelers out there, but obviously, it's too early, but we've got the ball rolling, and I think it's a good idea.
Well, obviously, if they're going to, if the school's gonna participate, I'm thinking maybe that's a civics class or something, or history, depending on.
Yeah, especially for like the high school kids, and then middle school, and through the elementary gear, different.
How do they do?
However, they would do it, and different things that they would vote on and have a participation.
Safe streets grant opportunity.
I had put this out early. I had gotten a, I had received an email with some grant opportunities that would be available to the town. And when I saw safe streets, I kicked it over to Evan to look into for me. And after both of us looking into it, it really was more of a, it's a planning and planning grant. And then a demonstration grant. So as with then the implementation. So basically, from what I gather from the grant is that they want you to create a plan to create safer streets and safer roads, and then an action plan. And then implement it with either widening your roads, or putting up signal, signals, or stop bars, or this or that. So at this time, the timeline for the grant is due in June. We just heard about this last week. So at this point, it would be my recommendation that we don't move forward with it right now, because it, from what I read about the grant, there's a lot of heavy lifting and heavy work and research and planning, and you also have to have a match where we don't really have the match for the funds this year through the default. But now that we have this information, I think we're gonna look forward till next year to see if it's something that we could apply for next year if it's worth it, and if we have the staff and time, and maybe something that you would also need to involve a grant writer in. Which that can be costly, too.
I wonder if this was, is like an option of when they came in and did all the signage? Remember a few years ago, the signage?
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, that was.
I think that was a state grant, actually.
Oh, was that through the state when they came in and did all the signage?
I have nothing.
So that was, I just remembered that. Okay, all right. On highway safety grants, FY 2026.
These are, you know, the grants that we apply for each year for DUI enforcement or speed enforcement, distracted driving. We just upped the fiscal year 25. This one, we just talked about last week. This is for next year. It's not due until the end of September, but we want to get it in. Ahead of time, there's also a portable speed radar board that we're looking to get as well.
You want it to tell you how fast you're going?
Yeah. So you know like the one on 140 coming down the hill by the elementary school?
Oh, yes.
Same thing as that.
Okay.
But we'll be able to move it wherever we want.
That one's permanent.
That one's hardwired.
Right.
But this is a solar one, so we can move it wherever.
So, do we have one already?
We had one, but it's.
We have a smaller one that's attached to the telephone pole up here.
I thought we had one.
We have a trailer one that's big.
Oh, okay.
But we, this is a small one, like the one on 140. You can attach it to a telephone pole. We just gotta buy the brackets. You can buy the brackets and leave them there, and then you can move it to whatever route you want on. We just gotta buy bracket.
Didn't the one on the trailer kind of?
The only one, but we gotta do one, is if we're gonna get.
Does it record if you're not there? And somebody goes by it instead of 35, or whatever the speed limit is, and somebody goes by at 65. Does it record their license number or if they're not?
There is a camera in them, but they're not useful.
There's a beaten road. The school is on the drag strip. I'm telling you something you don't know. Somebody, somebody's really gonna get made in front of these families.
Very shame on seven, the one that you got that's in the basement, the big one on the trailer.
Yeah.
Has it ever been used?
We, we have used it, but unfortunately, the, it wasn't charged. But at this point, we have to get it out there. Now, spring is here, you know, we don't want to put it out in the wintertime, because it's gonna heat it up, so.
Well, I remember right after you got it, just before, it was just before the national night out. There was a clipboard, and everyone could sign up to have it like dropped in front of their house.
Yes, and there's data or software that goes with it, too, that needs upgrades, so. That, that's one of the issues, honestly, is that it's, in order to program the trailer, without the software that we'd be getting with this grant, that we really didn't know about initially, you have to hardwire it into the board, and it's a, it's kind of tough to like code. But with, with the remote software that we'll give for this fiscal year 26, we'll be able to program that sign, the new sign, and the radar trailer remotely from an office. You know, if we want to create a message on one of them, we can just log in and create that message.
So now you have to physically go out?
Yeah, physically go out, plug it corded into it, and.
Yeah, Congressional League, the Rep. Spending Office of U.S. Senator Jean Chi-Hien.
Sorry, I have a motion to accept the.
Oh, we need to accept this?
Yeah.
Oh, we need to accept this grant? Sorry, gosh, I'm, I'm getting ahead. Go Travis.
The motion to amend the current year, fiscal year 2026 highway safety grant, 26 to 26 agreement, amended amount from $10,700 to $23,975 for the purpose of speed enforcement, DUI enforcement, distracted driving enforcement, and speed radar display in trailer. As stated in the agreement with a total match from the town of Belmont, an amount of $3,519.91 and authorized police chief Steve Backstrom and chairman Ruth Booney has authorized reps sign all documents related to the grant.
Do I have a second? I have a second. On favor?
Aye.
For the opposition, are there none? Okay, go on to the next one.
What is this one? So, you know, I think we're all kind of in the same boat. We're trying to find creative ways to fund things that we would normally need for a budgetary process. This is something that falls into that line. This year, or moving into next year, we'd be looking to replace a command vehicle to replace our 2016, 2017 Ford Taurus, which Ford's not even outpitting for police cruiser use anymore. So, we looked at putting in a grant, a vehicle that would serve that more of an administrative function, still has all the police equipment in it, because it'll respond to things. It's got, you know, brand, it's got $45,000 worth of electronics in it. So we put it into a competitive congressional discretionary fund grant through Jean Chi-Hien's office. We were notified last week or week and a half ago that the grant did not get accepted in the manner in which we put into it. However, they, they saw use in the grant, so they moved it from 100% funded to a 80/20 match. The feds would pay 80% of this vehicle. We'd have to come up with 20%. So, I mean, the total cost is just under $100,000, so you'd be getting basically a $100,000 vehicle for $20,000. The federal fiscal year runs September through October, so we'd be looking to probably get notified that we got approved for the grant sometime around fall. I wouldn't start this project until early next year. But this would also, you know, carve out some room in our budget proposal for the next year, which would hopefully, you know, just show everybody we're doing our due diligence to keep that down.
So this would go on next year's budget, basically, or would it be coming out of this year's?
Next year's, because they wouldn't have, they're not gonna get approved or denied until the fall.
Till fall, till this fall, but it's not gonna happen till?
26.
Okay. So this is something we just have to plan for in the budget. And. Good job. I know, it's a lot of work, you know. Okay. Trustees of the trust fund alternate appointment.
The trustees have been trying to get some alternate numbers to train and groom and grow, because the current trustees have been our trustees for a very, very long time. Eventually, they will retire from being the trustees of the trust fund, so they would like to get some qualified and engaged individuals to learn the ropes and be trained, quote unquote. So we did put an add-on in the paper. We've only, so far, received two inquiries about it. One of them is Woody Fogg. So he, so after meeting with them and talking to them, the trustees would like to put forward their recommendation for you guys to appoint Woody Fogg as an alternate to the trustees of the trust fund.
I'll make that motion to appoint Woody Fogg.
And I'll just add, and with his term expiry mark to 2026.
I'll second. Okay. On favor?
Aye.
In the opposition, are there none? Our next is the Shertrac trust property proposal to the town.
In your packet, you have a nice memo that Rod had created for us. So the owner of parcel 124029, which is property that is landlocked up behind Shaker Road, and it's out here past going that way. Up the road.
What's the name of the road out there? What's the name of the road out there?
The B is right there. Anyway, he had come to the town because he has a small landlocked parcel that abuts his other larger 246-acre parcel that he would like either the town to buy, or he would be willing to donate it to the town if we would abate taxes on the 246-acre parcel. In Rod's memo to you, it is our recommendation that the town does nothing. It's a landlocked parcel. Yes, it does abut a parcel of our land, but it is landlocked. It is wetlands. It's entirely within the FEMA-established five-year flood zone, and the owner.
Where does this leave us? And I don't see anybody here from the planning department. But where does this leave us in the flood plain with that area with the town of Belmont? Because this is in the flood plain of the town of Belmont.
Yeah.
Directly in the flood plain, and it's in a butt. This abuts our town reservoir, if you would. In a pond. Where does this leave us in that? And I would ask the tableists tonight, because I think we need a little bit more information about this. Where is this gonna leave us in years to come? I don't want to accept something that's gonna cause us trouble.
No, the recommendation is not to accept it. It is of no benefit to you.
Hold on. We could take it by current use, only because we have a right to look at it, because we own the pond. And if anybody goes legally into that, it's an unbuildable piece of property. So he doesn't have stake in it. He may have, because he owns it. But we also have a stake in it, because it abuts our water supply. So where do we stand? That's my question. I don't know the answer. I wouldn't ask the question. I'd try to give you the answer. Where does this stand going forward? They built all around it. They sold the properties around it. Now they got to this piece of property that's a high swamp, if you would. But it is a drainage into that pond. Where do we stand legally with our planning department? And I would like somebody that knows a lot more about planning than I do. I've only. I have my own idea of what I think. We should take it by eminent domain. Not by it.
The Shertracs own the property. They just don't want to pay the taxes on it.
I understand they own the property.
So I don't think you can take it by eminent domain. You would either just work out a deal with them to.
But we have, we have the backup property, which is our water supply to the town. So I don't feel that the Shertracs have a cement pad to stand them. I think they could take a better tax rate and tax loss, because let's face it, they're not a poor organization that if they donated it to the town, they'd get a better tax rate, and we wouldn't buy it. And it wouldn't cost us any money. And I'd like to look into that. I'm very well aware of the property sets.
Well, first off, I didn't think that as a town that we're in buying, buying land business. I mean, I guess as a taxpayer, I didn't say buy it.
I said, we should, they gave it to us. For the value of the land that has proposed would be a tax write-off for that trust that controls that land. And they would get a tax break. We'd get it. We wouldn't incorporate a tax, but that land opposes our pond over there. And I, or abuts it should be. I used the word opposed. That was the wrong word.
No, it doesn't. It's not near it. It's over.
But it's unbuildable.
You're thinking of 246-acre one that touches power.
But it's, that land right now is unbuildable. And I, that land right, you're looking at, is unbuildable. So being unbuildable, what good is it to them? So if they gave it to the town, the tax paid, they get off their taxes, not only our taxes, but the value of the property.
Well, I think for anybody in town that's dealt with the Shertracs in the past many, many years, how much has the Shertracs given to the town of Belmont?
That's right. Maybe it's time for them to realize how much they could accrue. And I gotta say right now, if I just goes, I'm gonna say no. I can stand on no, only because unless we ask and we push, we won't know.
I don't see any benefit from taking that property. I really don't. My vote.
No, and I think if you read further down, you will see that the gentleman that owns the apartments. Be with me one second. Is that the Bear Revocable Trust?
Yes.
The gentleman that owns the Bear Revocable Trust would love to be able to build a, another has shown interest in possibly building more apartments.
Yes.
But is unable to.
Correct.
And if he was to
Purchase it.
Purchase it himself, then he would be able to build some additional apartments there, which I think is beneficial for people. It's beneficial for him, but it's also beneficial for residents in town. So I basically would support what the information that we've received from the Land Use Office, and I don't support buying this. I don't think it has any benefit at all to the town of Belmont.
Neither why?
But it would have some benefit to this gentleman that then could have some benefit if he was to build another apartment house there for residents. That's mine.
You've done that, Cheryl. You've done that, Cheryl.
Well, it's, yeah, I guess so. I just don't see that it's, that it's beneficial for the town of Belmont, and I don't think we're in a position, again, I guess I've never seen them donate anything to the town of Belmont. So I don't see them donating this, and that's.
When I say donate, excuse me, when I say donating, they would take the tax break and get paid off their taxes. And the profitability of the Shertrac trust, which is a pretty old trust.
Right. I don't think it's enough to, I don't think it's enough to even know that the tax consequences on this piece of land that isn't valued very high is. I'd like to make the motion to reject the proposal from Assol Shertrac and not obtain ownership of lot 124-029-000.
No, second it.
All favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Are there none? Motion. Okay, other new business?
Yes. Evan, do you want to talk about the estate planning, or just do the whole that?
Yeah, yeah, sure. A couple of weeks ago, this kind of grew into something bigger than what it was supposed to be. A couple of weeks ago, a Laconian native, a former FBI agent, had reached out and said, hey, I'm back in town. His wife passed tragically at like age 31. It was very, very sudden. So he left the FBI, came back. He was a lawyer anyway, so we started doing wills and trusts. He reached out. He said, look, I'm still a first responder at heart. When I'm, while I've been doing wills and trusts, I've seen many, many pitfalls for people in your profession when it comes to estate planning and some of the hurdles that people have to jump through if they, if they're not properly planned. He said, would you guys be interested if I came in and did a talk with you guys? So I got with the chief, and we kind of threw some dates around, some things that really didn't fit the mold. But then we kind of got thinking, like, maybe we could expand this to everybody in town and everybody in our area. So I reached out back to Tim O'Brien, and he said, yep, that'd be great, the more the merrier. So we put it out. Recently, we get permission from the Legion to use the Fort Florida Mill. All of our town employees are welcome to show up. It's on May 3rd at 2:00 p.m. He's not selling anything. He's gonna do a quick presentation on some, some of the stuff he's seen, some of the things to avoid, and the importance of wills and trusts and the state planning.
Okay, I could see, maybe I read something about.
The newsletter, probably.
Is that where, you know, I read something about that, and, you know, it's not ever too early to.
I don't want to think about it. Nobody does, but something you need to.
No, and if it's, if he's willing to come in and speak, I think it's great. Any other new business?
Jen, yesterday did her, on Monday, she did her 2024 tax liens. And the total tax lien was $291,052, which included the 24 first-issue tax bill, the second-issue tax bill, and a little bit of water and sewer of that. So of that, 291, 286, 531 was uncollected, which equals about just a pair over 1% of uncollected, which is really, really good. They say if you're, can be under 4%, you're in a good position. So we're only at 1% uncollected in these taxes.
And tax bills are soon to go out?
And the tax bills will probably go out, probably be in the mail, maybe Monday, Tuesday.
The mail Monday.
Do you the first of July? It'll either be June, July 1st or July 2nd.
Awesome. Okay, no other, all business?
I have one more.
Any other business?
In your packet, we, as everyone knows, we are diligently working on the Route 140 Force Main and trying to either, you know, state our case that the whole entire Force Main doesn't need to be replaced either at one time or looking at alternates. You guys have already approved us moving forward with conducting the test pits. The original estimate from Underwood was 50,000 after they've gotten their quotes and work from the vendors. The new ESR is 65,200. So just be looking for a motion to accept that new estimate. I am also going to, I know it's tiny penis, because we, we pay for 97.5% of that line, and Northfield pays 2.5% of the $62,1600 would be Northfield's share. But I'm going to send them a letter to ask if they would be willing to chip in, since they have just as much stake in the game as us, as we. Because if we do have to fund the full $9.9 million, their share will be around $260,000.
And ours will. 28,000 first month's interest.
9.3.
Have you been able to reach out to Joe Kenny yet? He's a good counselor.
No.
I did bump into him, and he said he was gonna reach out. I did bump into him, and he said he was gonna reach out to you, but, or if you reach out in first, so he's given my going. He's gonna drag the E S down here, the E S. So we can hammer up all this timeframe.
They had this problem with their force main between Ashland and Meredith along the river. Ten years ago, ten years after the sewer system was put in, because it did not encase it. If you rent a boat, you came down from Laconia down Winasquaw along the river, in fact, you will see a cement box that follows along the lake. Along squaw, you will see the same box. Because when they did this sewer project, they started at first and it went to Franklin. Anywhere the land was wet, they put it in a cement box. Except between Ashland and Meredith, they ran it right through the wet area. Two years ago, they had to dig it all up. They do the same thing wet face with it. They paid for that. This sewer line that goes down one-forty is encased in nothing but muck. Same muck they dug out, they digged a trench for the pipe. That should have been encased in a box also. And the vibration, which has increased over the years on one-forty, due to the truck traffic and the gravel bits, which their state approved as low as town approved.
The blasting probably has something to do with it.
Well, it could have, that's right, you know, but just along that swamp, that I questioned whether that was properly engineered by the state and by the feds. And that's the time to stand up, and I think that's a legal battle that we have and can win. Because they went back to Ashland, Plymouth and Holdenus, they didn't do the whole stretch, they only did, went, went through the wet areas to come down through, to get to Meredith, because it's all, that's where it started, it started in Plymouth. One of the Saki River Basin started in Plymouth and came all the way to Franklin.
So when you're saying they paid for it, who?
They had the state's government.
The state?
The state and the government, to clean up the lakes, to get the sewer from going in the lakes.
No, I mean this, the re, the re-digging from Ashland to Meredith.
They did re-dig it, they made them put them in cement boxes, they, these, back then, the select people and the planning boards of those towns had enough foresight, they said, wait a minute. We got Route three, you follow Route three all the way down, it's all wet here, so they encased it. And they encased it just like we see along the railroad tracks, if you got a boat on Winasquaw and you go up and down the lake from Winasquaw Bridge. So Laconia, what do you see going north, you can see the encasement, where the sewer lines are in that encasement. Which means if the line breaks, it's encased, so it won't leak into the lake.
So.
Because I'm questioning that this from here, from the coal plant out, the traffic has increased by three-hundred percent since they put that in there, probably. And that should be addressed by them, because these engineers didn't build it for ten years, they built it for a lifetime. And I believe that should be, I think that should have been done.
Is that all part of the One Passaki?
Yes, it is, it's all part of the One Passaki Basin project.
So, I would assume it was paid for by the One Passaki River Basin?
Yes, and then the government.
So the government or the towns?
At the same time, in the mid-sixties, I haven't been alive then, they government also gave the town an option to have water lines from Laconia with the deals they set forth with Laconia and our selectmen then. They declined the deal, because we gotta have water and sewer down one-oh-six. The Belmont, and then connect to our Main Street project, which we're taking care of side of Main Street there, and then down one-forty, and they declined. The other towns, Meredith took it.
That was the only core of engineer that got involved.
Well, no, they got, they got involved, but the One Passaki River Basin project, late cleaning project.
But the, the water down one-oh-six was the, um, the core of engineers.
Water and sewer.
I don't remember the sewer part, but that was when right through all of the town, that's right.
The Haran, on the demo track.
Yeah, yeah, that would have, we would have had, we would have had endless water, we had, um, that bad.
And they hadn't put an agreement up for Laconia and for us to buy, and the only guy that bought the water agreement was a man named Louis Wall.
Yeah.
Who got water down Route three. Or we wouldn't have Laconia water at the building mall. We're down as far as
I guess, I'm sorry.
Where's this money come from again, is it from the capital fund for the water and sewer?
Which, you know, which, well, we chose to use those funds, some of those funds, to make a point, obviously, all right? And obviously, those funds will deplete what we have, we end up having to pay nine million dollars, and you and I both know, it'll be far more than that.
How, how soon they give the answer?
Like today, because they wanna start work at the end of the month. The state wants to already hire their engineers and get on the design plan and already get this built and um, they're basically giving us a grace period to do our test pits, to prove our point or disprove our point, um, so that they can get
Even if we go forwards with this, can you get in contact with Joe Kenny, instead of meeting with, having come to our selectman meeting with the E S? We can hammer this stuff out some point? Because I think even with the test pits, they're gonna still drive bullshit.
Oh, they, uh, they're going to, because they have, because obviously federal monies have dried up, so they have nothing to do. Well, and they are too, so they're three months off back on the town.
Well, it's gonna affect the sooner later, as face, it's nothing about water supply. Unless they knew what a first, well.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, the point to get a lot of others involved is when this does prove our point. And then we say, now you need to work with us in saying, this is the only plan that we want to do, take it or leave it. When now we say, we proved our point, our engineers are, you know, right in this did the test pits, now, no, you now need to work with us in what works for our, our repairs. I mean, right now, you're looking at, you know, if you, when, if they did uh, a thirty-year bond at the nine-point-three million, you're looking at with interest, probably three-hundred-and-fifty thousand a year that I need to divvy up between the sewer users, so you're looking at about three-hundred-and-twenty dollars a year for thirty years for the rate pairs to pay for that.
And there's no other problem.
Right, I would just say that, and that's only if
The only infrastructure that ever fails, or it needs to be replaced, and we all know for the replacement costs for all the other infrastructure that we also have to pay into. It's just unfortunate we have ninety percent, ninety-seven percent ownership of that line.
No, they feel we have ninety, see, I don't agree with that.
Can I say something?
Sure.
So if we don't do those test pits? And, so say, say we're right or wrong. If we don't do those test pits, and the state makes us put this line in, and we have to pay, all these rate payers have to pay this extra rate for so many years. They're gonna say, well, why didn't we, why didn't we do our due diligence, why didn't we explore the condition of certain areas of this pipe? Yes, we are in, we are in total agreement, that there's a set section of that pipe that needs to be replaced. But there's certain sections that we don't believe need to be replaced, we don't, we don't believe it needs to be a nine-point-nine million dollar budget. But we have to do this, we have to spend this money, yeah, it's, it's, it's a lot of money. And, you know, we, we were approached as far as the town doing the test pits, but the problem is, you know, Busby's gonna do the test pits. So Busby is not only our contractor, but it's there.
Yeah, that's
So you're gonna, so, so, no, that's the way to do it.
You think so?
Uh, one hundred percent.
Okay, I mean, not that I don't.
Yeah, so, and there's gonna be people on site that are gonna be inspected, you know, I mean, as far as the town, we're not set up with a trench box, we don't have, we don't have I, I would have loved to do it to try to save some money, but I think it's counterproductive, try to do this.
Let's write beside one-forty, we all know what the traffic aside.
Well, the problem is a lot of it, a lot of it's cross-country.
Yeah.
So they're gonna go out through, you know, through the meadows there, and you really need to you really need to have the right machinery, the right equipment, the safety reasons, and, and, you know.
The thing that bothers me the most is, like, through the meadows, it's all elevated down through
It is, and, and like I said, that's, my feeling is, that, that pipe's gonna be in pretty good condition. You know, the pipe where, where it was, where it was replaced, and you know, you say, John, you know, the, the engineer, but it was done to the engineering standards of the day. So they had a certain, they had a certain pipe, and they had a certain way to do things.
The truck traffic on a long one-forty, kind of a coal plant plant.
Yeah.
In Northfield.
It gets, that, that pipe was placed in corrosive soil. So what happens when you put a metal pipe in a corrosive soil? You can have all the traffic and all the vibration you want, that corrosive soil is gonna rot that pipe from the outside in. And that's what's happened, I mean, I've seen, I've seen it firsthand, I've seen sections of this pipe that have been replaced, and the bottom of that pipe, it's supposed to be a hundred-year pipe, fifty-year, it's completely rotten.
I think the other thing that bothers me the most is the fact that they have not, not done one test pit. They have not done one test pit on that such a road, you always do test pits. How can they tell?
Because they're the king.
Yeah, I guess so.
They're the king, and they, they wanna be, they don't wanna be told what to do, they have they, they have the power of just like, do what we say, and that's, so we, that's why we're trying to do everything we can
Yeah.
to, to defend our rate pairs, and to, to, to find a viable solution without, you know, um, taxing everyone's
It just drives, it just drives me crazy that why are we, and we are, we have to, because I've sat through a couple of those meetings and listened to that woman, and she's adamant that she's going to replace that whole line, no, no we've seen her butts. And you bring up anything asking, oh, did you do, we don't need to, we already know what the problem is, how do they know what the problem is?
We have to do
Yeah.
We have to do what we have to do to at least try to defend ourselves.
All right, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion, um, to accept Underwood's new estimate of sixty-five thousand two hundred for the test pits for the Route one-forty force main, with funds to come from the sewer capital reserve, capital reserve fund. Thank you, Sharon.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Uh.
I, any opposition, hearing none, and you'll forward with that. Okay, um, we onto old business?
Yeah. That was old business.
That was old business, do we have any other old business, we have none, um, any public comments? Hearing none, our next meeting is scheduled for June fourth at ten A M, and I believe we have no non-public, correct? This meeting is adjourned, do I have a motion to?
Right at the end of January.
A motion to adjourn, Sharon's making a motion, do I have a second? All favor?